We'd like to call this evening's meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. Welcome Joe Deacon and his listening audience at WCBU as well as Cable Channel 22. Madam Clerk, the council microphones are open for roll call.
Mayor Artis, Councilmember Ali.
Present.
Councilmember Seer. Councilmember Grab. Councilmember Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Montalongo.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Rigenbach.
Here.
Councilmember Ruckregel.
Here.
You have a quorum present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. In accordance with Governor Pritzker's Executive Order 2020-07, as amended and extended, limiting meetings to the lesser of 25 persons or 25% of the overall room capacity, and requiring the provision of video, audio, or telephonic access to meetings, as well as the CDC recommending social distancing of at least six feet between persons. City Hall is implementing changes and restrictions for the city council meetings on March 19th, or March 9th, 2021, while complying with the Spirit of the Open Meetings Act. The council meeting will be held in person in city council chambers, a room capacity restriction of 25 persons at one time, which could result in a wait to enter if met. Temperature screenings and face coverings are required for access inside City Hall. Members of the public and media are invited to watch through the live stream of the city of Peoria's website, YouTube, local television Channel 22, or listening through WCBU radio. While public comment is available in person, the option to submit comments through the city clerk's office due to room capacity restrictions was available as well. Any submissions will be read into the record. The agenda minutes and video podcast of the meeting will be available online through the city's website. We also received a notice by a member of the city council in accordance with rules established in Ordinance Number 16142, and the member will be deemed authorized to attend the meeting electronically unless a motion objecting to the member's electronic attendance is made, seconded, and approved by two-thirds of the members of the city council physically present at the meeting. If no such motion is made and seconded, then the request by the member to attend electronically shall be deemed approved by the city council and the presiding officer and shall declare the requesting member present. We did receive the notice from Councilmember Moore to attend this evening, this evening's meeting electronically, and seeing no objections, we will consider Councilmember Moore here. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Moore.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite everyone to join us and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The recipient got ahold of us and said that she was going to practice extreme safety and stay at home and watch the proclamation presentation at home with her family. So tonight, we're very happy and proud to present this proclamation to Elizabeth Kleis, the author and illustrator of Once Upon Peoria. Whereas in her book, Once Upon Peoria, local artist Elizabeth Liz Kleis has not only created an alphabetical love letter to Peoria, but a beautifully constructed tribute to the city and many things that make it unique. And whereas using magazines, glue sticks, and her artistic vision, Liz recreated colorful and nostalgic landmarks certain to delight and resonate with residents and visitors of all ages. Vanna White Wall, the gargoyles that protect Bradley University's campus, and the Pettingill Morin House are all on display. And whereas Liz doesn't stop there, she takes her readers on a trip of Peoria's past with fond memories of the Burgner's Christmas tree and childhood favorites such as Captain Jinx and Salty Sam. And whereas Once Upon Peoria is not only a tour guide and a history lesson, it's an artistic journey through the past and present, making us remember old favorites and introducing us to new ones. And whereas drawing from her own memories of Peoria, Liz managed to incorporate touchpoints of our youth while blending them with recognizable locations of our present day. And whereas we thank Liz and her family for their experiences in Peoria and her ability to share her vision with all of us through her, through her beautifully illustrated pages. Now therefore, I, Mayor Artis, Mayor of the city of Peoria, do hereby recognize and thank Elizabeth Kleis for sharing her talent and love for the city in Once Upon Peoria in Peoria, Illinois dated this 9th day of March 2021 A.D. On behalf of the city council and all of us here in Peoria, Liz, we wish you were here in person. As the proclamation mentioned, we are very happy to be able to pay tribute to you for this marvelous book. I would tell anybody that's interested in obtaining this book, of which myself and the council have all have ownership of, be glad to go to our website, and we'll have information on the website in terms of how you can go about arranging to purchase one of these unbelievable books for your own family and perhaps your children. It's a marvelous piece. And of course, the council knows and most people in Peoria know that the Kleis name is very synonymous with leadership in this community, and generations have given back to our community, and we thank them for that as well. Councilmember Ruckregel.
I move to approve the minutes of the rescheduled city council meeting held on February 22nd, 2021, as printed.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilmember Grab, are there any corrections or changes to the minutes? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We're at the township portion of the, of the meeting. 21-056 is a request from the township officials to approve the February 2021 actual expenditures and to approve the March 2021 anticipated expenditures for the town of the city of Peoria.
Thank you. Trustee Grab.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve as outlined.
Seconded by trustee Kelly, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We're at the consent agenda. 21-057 is a request to approve the recommendation from the Home for All Continuum of Care for the funding allocation of the Emergency Solutions Grant COVID Funding to specified agencies in the amount of $795,903. 21-058 is a request to approve the purchase of one Genesis extrication tool system from the low bid of municipal emergency services in the amount of $27,400. 21-059 is a request to approve the purchase of nine complete self-contained breathing apparatus and 29 air cylinders from the low bid of municipal emergency services in the amount of $74,545. 21-060 is a request to approve a contract with ReRig Pacific Company in an amount not to exceed $36,310 to purchase 702 new 95-gallon garbage carts for replacement and inventory. 21-061, which has a replacement resolution that's yellow on your desk, and it's basically to revise the formatting. This is a communication from the city manager and community development director with requests for the following. A is to approve an incumbency certificate and resolution accepting a grant from the Illinois Housing Development Authority for the Strong Communities Program in the amount of $200,000. And B is to adopt an ordinance amending the city of Peoria 2021 revised annual budget relating to the capital fund to recognize the receipt of a grant from the Illinois Housing Development Authority for the Strong Communities Program and corresponding expenditures in the amount of $200,000. 21-062 is a request to approve the following. A is to approve a substantial amendment to the 2020 to 2024 consolidated plan for submittal to the Department of Housing and Urban Development. B is to approve the reallocation of prior year's CDBG funds. And C is to adopt an ordinance amending the city of Peoria 2021 revised annual budget relating to the Community Development Block Grant Fund to recognize the receipt of additional grant funds from the Department of Housing and Urban Development to prevent, prepare, or respond to COVID-19 in the amount of $795,903. And the corresponding expenditures reduce the 2020 CDBG grant funding in the amount of $314, and corresponding expenditures, and to reduce the home fund to recognize the decrease in the Home Investment Partnership Grant in the amount of $105, and the corresponding reduction in expenditures. 21-063 is a request to adopt an ordinance amending the city of Peoria 2021 revised annual budget relating to the recognition of a grant received from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity for Local Cures Economic Support Payments Grant Program known as the Business Recovery Grant Program, and the corresponding expenditures in the amount of $1,385,000. 21-064 is a request to adopt an ordinance amending the city of Peoria 2021 revised annual budget relating to the purchase of a seized 2017 Dodge Ram 1500 Limited for the Police Special Investigation Division using the police, using the state asset forfeiture funds in the amount of $16,186. 21-065 is an appointment by Mayor Artis to the Transportation Commission with a request to concur of Jeremy Kors. And 21-066 is a request to receive and file a report from the Illinois Department of Transportation titled Documentation Review Number 73. That completes your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Items to remove from consent, Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Items 21-061, 21-062, and 21-063, please.
Okay. 61, 62, 63.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any other items to remove from consent? Seeing none, I have a motion to approve the remaining items. Councilmember Ruckregel, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
21-061 is the item that has the revised resolution, and A is the resolution to accept the grant from IHDA for the Strong Communities Program, and B is to adopt the ordinance that amends the budget for that item.
Okay. Councilmember Moore.
Are two motions needed?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to move to approve item A.
Okay, we have a motion, seconded by Councilmember Rigenbach. Is there a discussion on the item? Councilmember Moore? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank our Grants Department and Economic Development and Community Development for applying for these funds that are going specifically to 61605 to do demolition. And if you read through the background on the communication, it indicates that approximately 25 houses in the MacArthur Corridor area are being targeted. In a later item that we're going to discuss, I believe it's the very next one, you will find that there is a reference to the South, Tiff, South Village, MacArthur Corridor Plan that is part of the consolidated plan. And so I just wanted to bring your attention that these things are working in concert to facilitate that, that plan that's going to come up next. So with that, I had no more comments.
Additional discussion on this item, Councilmember Ali.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Artis. I am a member of the Ida Board, and I know I abstained as a member of the board from that vote, but I think it's probably proper for me to abstain here too. So I'm going to abstain from both A and B for that, for that reason. Thank you.
Okay, so noted. Is there any additional discussion on item A? I'm seeing none. We have a motion in a second. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously with one abstention, Councilmember Ali. Councilmember Moore on item B.
Yes, on item B, I'd like to move for approval.
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Jensen. Discussion on this item, Councilmember Moore.
Yes, I'd only like to say that this $200,000 brings to a total of $1 million that has been brought to the district in order to do demolition over the last five years. And so with that, there's a lot that's going on in the district, and I appreciate the opportunity to have you all chime in that you support this $200,000 investment in District One.
Thank you. Additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, we have a motion in a second. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
That motion also passes unanimously with one abstention. Dr. Ali, Madam Clerk.
21-062 is the amendment to the 20 to 2024 consolidated plan, and B is the reallocation of the prior year CDBG funds, and C is to adopt the ordinance that amends the budget.
Okay. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a couple of questions for Director Black. I believe Director Black was in the lead in creating this document. Okay. Director, thank you for being here. On page 78 of the document, there's reference to the supportive needs of the population and how they are determined, and some of the areas that are referenced that are needed, assistance is needed, is employment searches for livable wage positions and employment retention. And my question is, are the funds that are allocated to the CDBG Public Relations Commission that are, that are given out as, as grants to local organizations, is there any possible way that because in our consolidated plan, we are saying that this is important, and we need to look at that aspect, currently employment training is one of those things that can be granted from the, from that CSBDG, CBDG commission? Is there any way to think about a point system that could provide higher weight to those areas that are pointed out in this plan that we feel needs to have greater assistance?
Thank you, Councilwoman. The, the quick answer to that is yes. Certainly, the city council, as you know, on an annual basis, takes the recommendations from the CDBG Public Service Committee and then votes on the targeted activities for that year. So the next time that that list comes to the city council, absolutely, the council could apply a weighted approach to specific types of activities that, that the council wanted to focus on.
And so for clarity for that commission, would it be the council that would provide the weighted approach, or would it be necessary for the commission to determine that weighted approach and then submit that to the council for approval?
Councilwoman, I, I think the more efficient method would be for the commission to come up with a recommendation that could include a weighted approach and then present that to the council for approval, as you suggested, rather than having the council attempt to create that application process on the floor.
Okay. So I also wanted to continue on by thanking Director Roth and his team for putting this rather lengthy report together. As many of you know, it covers the South Side, the North Valley, and East Bluff. And there were meetings held in each, in those areas, at neighborhood associations. A lot of people were able to chime in, not only in person but online, and the result is this huge report that you received, plus the black binder. There's quite a bit of other information that's in there. I've gone through it, I won't go through it tonight, only to say that there are areas that we provide funding through various grant resources from the city that we should continue to look at and provide. But in this case, with this five-year consolidated plan, have more weighted approach to those applications that, that are directly addressing this plan. I won't go any further, this, this thing is quite lengthy. So please take the time to review the several hundred pages, and we can come back on it a little later. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Did you want to make a motion on this, Councilmember?
I move to approve item A.
Motion to approve, seconded, Councilman Rigenbach. Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Councilmember on item B.
I move to approve item B.
Motion to approve, seconded, Councilmember Ruckregel. Discussion on this item?
I would just like to mention, if you looked at that particular section in this communication, you see the reallocation of, of those prior year funds are going toward the, the new Fire Station Four on the corner of Western and Howett. So it is staying in, in the South Side. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We have a motion in a second. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. And on item C, Councilmember Moore.
Move to approve, item C.
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Jensen. Councilmember Moore.
No comments, please.
Okay. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Councilman Montalongo.
Thank you.
Councilmember Moore.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Item 21-063 is the ordinance amending the revised annual budget in recognition for the grant from the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I placed it on, on hold. This is, I believe, the city manager or Director Black might want to speak to this. Well, actually, it's just a receive and file, so I move that we receive and file.
This, on 63, it's a, just a motion to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just motion to approve.
Yes, yes. When you don't have your, when you're not at the desk, it's a little more complicated. So this is the revised annual budget, and in this case, I pulled this because I wanted to thank economic development, specifically Kevin Evans and Caesar Suarez, for receiving all the calls and visits from people who were applying for funds. There were quite a few people who came through an organization called the Minority Business Development Center, who had no clue as to how to complete this paperwork to receive these funds. They didn't even realize they were eligible to get funds, and Kevin and Caesar helped a lot of people's hands. And I don't, I don't know if, if most of us realize how instrumental they were in helping people receive funding. So that was the reason I pulled this, was to thank them for all that they did. And with that, I'd like to move for approval.
Motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Rigenbach. Discussion? Mr. Manager, did you want to add anything on this? I know it was a, it's a big deal.
It, this is, so tonight, with the, the action you took during the consent agenda, you approved $700,000 for agencies that are providing services to homeless individuals in our community. Second, tonight, with this action, this, we have already provided $950,000 of grant funds to 53 different businesses in the community. We have $450,000 more that, that we'll be able to continue to deliver to other businesses in the community. So, and I would echo what Councilwoman Moore just said about the efforts of our economic development team, and Caesar and Kevin specifically, Shamra and Deborah as well, who leads the team. They've done a great job on this.
Thank you. Councilman Montalongo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of questions and, and thoughts with this too. Mr. City Manager, are you the one that, or do we have anybody from economic development to be able to talk on this?
We do. Kevin Evans, our senior economic development specialist is here to answer questions.
Maybe just to explain a little bit about the process? Do they have to reapply, et cetera?
Councilperson Montalongo, I'm here. Can you repeat your question?
Could you go through the process of applying for a, a grant through this program?
So the process to apply is that we, we have a process of application that is available online, or individuals can apply via paper application, but the eligibility with respect to the grant is if you have a business in the city of Peoria, your business needed to be in business prior to December of 2019 to be eligible for grant funding.
So this, it's going back to December of 2019?
Correct.
I know during that process, last time, I know there was some discussion because there was a, a couple of businesses that may have been close to that, that deadline, and that could be, be changed a little bit here since we're at, I mean, we're past, way past that now. But I know there was a couple of questions from some businesses that did not qualify the last time, and just wanting to hope that they can be included in this, this next round here. And also... And also, some feedback that I received from some of the business community is, I guess a simple way to say it is, if we can make the application process a little more simpler for them to fill out.
We appreciate your feedback. We will do everything that we can to consider the feedback with respect to the eligibility that is set by the department, by the grant application that we've previously submitted. There's not much of an opportunity to adjust eligibility, but we will certainly consider making the process a little more friendly.
So, my comments to that, so, I know we didn't expend the money, and then we gave additional money for housing homeless, I guess. And so, I think maybe we missed the opportunity to circle back and to visit with some of those businesses that just missed the cutoff deadline. So, I guess that would be my, my thought behind that is, you know, we're missing out on some businesses that are providing, whether it's a retail or restaurant-type business in our community, and they all have struggled quite a bit. I just want to make sure that we find a way to include them, one way or another.
Councilperson Montalongo, we are seeking to include as many businesses as we possibly can.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have motion and second, is there any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Member Moore?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We're at first readings. 21-067 is a request to receive and file a first reading of the following. A is an ordinance amending Chapter 5 of the City of Peoria Code pertaining to building codes based on the recommendation of the Construction Commission to adopt the 2018 ICC International Building Code, the 2018 International Fuel/Gas Code, the 2018 ICC International Mechanical Code, the 2018 ICC International Property Maintenance Code, the 2018 International ICC Fire Code, the 2018 ICC International Residential Code, and the 2017 National Electrical Code citywide. And B is to, is an ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the City of the Code pertaining to building codes based on the recommendation of the Construction Commission to adopt the 2018 ICC International Property Maintenance Code.
Thank you. Director Black?
Thank you, Mayor. This is our occasional update to the city's suite of building codes. Currently, we are on the 2012 cycle of codes, and this would move us to the 2018 cycle. Really, no substantial changes from 2012 to 2018. Some definitional changes and some accommodations for building technologies that have been created since the 2012 codes were adopted. This recommendation does include the same waivers that were included with the 2012 codes, including the waiver of a required sprinkler system in single-family residential development, and the adoption of the air rights clause that the Council adopted a couple of years ago.
Thank you. Also, the communication contained the information that the Construction Commission did have a discussion on this and were supportive, as well as the Peoria Area Association of Realtors, as well, were notified and had no objections to moving forward on the first reading. Any questions or discussion for the first reading? Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I appreciate that the Construction Commission or the city sought input from far, from the Realtors, with regards to the building code changes, but it doesn't say in the description about the changes to the property maintenance code, whether neighborhood groups or property owners were given notice of the proposed changes, and any opportunity to provide input to those. Was that done?
Councilwoman, there was no direct outreach to neighborhood associations for changes to the property maintenance code, because there really were no changes. The property maintenance code doesn't change very much from cycle to cycle, because the maintenance of property is the maintenance of property, unlike the building code, where there are introductions of new building technologies or equipment that would be used in new construction.
Okay. So, you're saying that the proposed changes are, there isn't really anything substantial? Is that right?
That is correct, Councilwoman.
Do they still, under, if we adopt this ordinance, does it include, you know, years ago, when we adopted the International Property Maintenance Code? We modified many of the proposals so that it would be more consistent with what we do in Peoria, and with, you know, what was already in our Chapter 13. So, does, do we continue to do that?
Sorry, Councilwoman, had the difficulty with the microphone there.
No problem.
Yes, yes. In fact, if, towards the end of the attachment, you can see all of the local changes that effectively modify the base 2018 Property Maintenance Code. And they're the same changes that we've had in place for many, many years, in terms of local definitions that we follow, and local standards as to the violation height of weeds and grass, and what the process is for the adjudication of violations.
Okay, that's great. I just wanted to make sure I know neighborhood groups and people, especially people in the older neighborhoods, spend a lot of time, as well as city staff, making sure that we keep our neighborhoods in good shape and that our properties maintain. So, I'm glad to see that continues. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Black, first of all, I'd like to address the, what on my Granicus screen says PDF. It's an artistic chart of, I think, water flowing downhill with a bunch of bubbles. Are you familiar with this?
Councilman, I am. I noticed that in my packet, and frankly, I have no idea what it is.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Director Black, because I don't either. I was trying to figure out what it, what it meant. Thank you. And also, our building codes are not in paper form, is that correct?
So, the building codes are in paper form. There are very large building code books. They are not available through UNICode.
I'm sorry, Director Black. What is UNICode?
UNICode, the online-
Oh, yes.
-code of the city of Peoria.
Okay. Thank you. The major building code, how many pages do you think that entails?
Well, I would say-
Not exactly, yes.
-it's probably closing on 700-plus pages.
And this is a code that people in the construction business in Peoria and in many other cities are supposed to be familiar with as they enter into a project. Is that correct?
Correct. At this point, the International Building Code is the base code for probably almost every community in the United States.
It seems to me that the exercise of the continuous expansion of our building codes, our fire codes, our electrical codes, our plumbing codes, et cetera, et cetera, is some sort of an exercise in, and this is my opinion only, Director, an exercise in people proving how valuable they are at their jobs. And the practical applications of these things are observed and enforced in the breach. No one can really know or understand what these building codes, what all these codes entail. And I'm wondering if you're aware of any municipalities who have taken it upon themselves to make these things much shorter, much, you know, every time we get a new building code, it seems somehow to be a little bigger than the last one. And it seems like it's an exercise in futility, as far as somebody keeping up, especially a small operator. Now, I know that the staff is available to that small operator, but it seems to me that this is approaching, or perhaps already is, just a really impractical way to, to tell people what is required in our city for health and safety. First of all, the question on, I have 26 seconds left, so, the question on other municipalities doing things differently, are you aware of any substantial municipalities that do?
Councilman, I'm not aware of any municipality that has effectively created their own building code from the ground up. And I would say that for the majority of the jobs that we see here in town, they're only dealing with a fraction of the building code, or the electric code, or the plumbing code. So, if it's someone who's coming in who wants to build a deck on the back of their house, then we do have handouts and flyers that can help people with, with jobs like that. But we also have projects like the multimillion-dollar cancer center, which is starting development up on the OSF campus, and that frankly, needs the type of detailed codes that we find in the international codes.
But that architect would have access to that, I suspect.
Correct, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Director.
Councilman Seer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a comment with the conversation with Director Black. Your staff, the last four years, Director Black, am I correct in saying that we have reduced our code by at least 300 pages, and we have reduced many, many fees, and eliminate, eliminated many, many fees also? Is this statement correct, Director Black?
That is correct, yes, sir.
Just want to make sure, now, we're terrible at promoting the city of Peoria, but I want to commend your staff, yourself and your staff, Director Black. I know you've done an exceptional job the last four years, anywhere three and a half years, and we need, when we talk to developers, we need to probably reduce another 200 or 300 pages. But I just want to congratulate you on your efforts and your staff for reducing our code by 300 pages, reducing fees, and eliminating some fees. So, congratulations, job well done the last three and a half, four years. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions for Director on first reading? If not, we entertain a motion to receive and file. Councilman Seer, seconded by Councilmember Ali. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Item A passes unanimously. We'd be on item B for questions, discussion, first reading. Councilor, Director Black, would you like to just give us a quick overview on this one as well?
Thank you, Mayor. This is really just, it's the same process, this is just amending Chapter 13 of the City Code, as opposed to Chapter 5, and that is specifically to the property maintenance code.
Questions for Director Black? Motion to receive and file, Councilman Seer, seconded by Councilmember Grab. If there's no other questions, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Item B passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
21-068 is a request to receive and file a first reading of a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance amending Appendix A, the Unified Development Code relating to zoning review and nonconformities.
Director Black?
Thank you, Mayor. This is one of the more complex components of zoning ordinances, which is saying something. It deals with nonconformities. We're not really requesting any particular changes to the city's regulations on nonconforming uses. What we're trying to do with this communication is reformat the chapter on nonconforming uses to make them more understandable for the public. So, effectively, a nonconforming use, or nonconformity, is created when there's either a structure or a use that's currently in place, and then the regulations are changed. And so, that use or structure becomes nonconforming. And in the memo, you can see some examples of different nonconformities, a structure or use in a sign, and how this would be, how this would be applied. So, again, this is not a change to the regulations, it's simply a change to the formatting of the chapter.
Thank you. Correct, discussion or questions for Director Black? We have a motion on the first reading to receive and file, Councilman Euler, seconded by Councilmember Ruckregal. Not seeing any discussion. Please cast your ballots. Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
21-069, there is a replacement ordinance on your desk, on yellow. This is a request to receive and file a first reading of an ordinance dividing video gaming terminal fees between operators and establishments.
Thank you. Council Peterson, did you want to give us an overview of this, please?
Of course, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In January, the Council passed ordinances that provided some license fee relief to liquor license holders, as well as to the video gaming terminal license holders. Those would be our local establishments, not the operators, which are generally your gaming and entertainment companies. So, in January, the Council determined that they were going to extend the gaming licenses by two months, and cut the fees in half by 50%. Now, shortly after that ordinance was passed, we received some inquiries from some of the local establishments about whether or not the operators could be required to pay 50% of the local establishment fee. Now, interestingly enough, the state law is written in a way that requires the operators and the local establishments to equally split the state fee. However, in May of 2019, the Illinois Gaming Board issued a ruling that said operators, so again, the gaming or entertainment companies, could not offer any kind of inducement or any type of payment to the local establishments for those fees. So, some municipalities, Springfield, for example, have been drafting and passing ordinances that require our local fee to be split 50/50 between the local establishment and the operator, thereby mirroring what the state requirement is. And so, that's what you have in front of you. It is an ordinance that would split what normally would be a $500 fee, but based on the ordinance in January, we cut those in half. So, for this license year, it would only be 250 to be paid $125 by the local establishment and $125 by the operator. Now, do keep in mind, the operators pay a separate licensing fee per terminal, and we did not take any action on that in January. January.
Thank you. Correct questions or discussion for Council Peterson? Okay. Motion to approve by Councilmember Jensen and seconded by Councilmember Euler. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Yes, we're at regular business, twenty-one dash oh seven oh. And this is a request to approve one of the following. A is to concur with the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to adopt Ordinance A, replacing special use Ordinance fifteen oh seventy-seven with a special use in a Class C2 large-scale commercial district and Class C1 general commercial district for a shopping center for the property located at thirty-six twenty-four, thirty-six twenty-two, thirty-six oh two, North University, and twelve oh five West Florence Avenue. Or B is to concur with the recommendation from staff to adopt Ordinance B, replacing the special use ordinance with a special use large-scale commercial district for a shopping center at the same location.
Thank you. Councilmember Grab?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark Weston and Kirk Johnson, who are present in our chambers tonight, did a great job meeting with the leaders of North Florence Bigelow Neighborhood Association and Biltmore Heights Neighborhood Association, explaining what this incremental approach would involve as it relates to this parcel. And what we are attempting to accomplish tonight is a site approval for just one part of the total parcel. And Director Black, could you please provide a more comprehensive overview of what we've been working on with the neighbors and with Mr. Weston and Mr. Johnson, as well as Katie Kim?
Thank you, Councilman. What you have before you this evening is a request for a special use for a shopping center. The entire area covers about four and a half acres. However, the development footprint for this evening is about 1.5 acres for one financial services building of approximately 4,000 square feet. So a little bit smaller in terms of footprint than the McDonald's just to the south of this particular location. As Councilman Gria pointed out, because special uses are site plan specific, any additional development on this parcel, on this larger parcel, would have to come back through the public hearing process and then back before the city council for approval. And as you all know, once a special use comes back for review, then all items in that special use are subject to review, even those items that were approved prior. So some of the items that were important to the surrounding neighbors, there is a driveway access from this particular parcel south onto Florence Avenue. The recommendation from city staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission, and certainly the support of the neighbors to the south, and the support of the petitioner, is that that access point would be a left-in, right-out only. So this would push traffic back and forth between the driveway and university, and therefore not interfere or disturb the residential properties further to the east on Florence. Beyond that, the only difference between the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff is that the staff recommendation is to allow the existing left turn, which would be a southbound turn from the property onto University, to remain. We believe that with the volume and impact of the proposed development, the one financial services building, that there's no reason to restrict a turn movement that has been in place for many, many decades. And the traffic counts do not have a look at that to make any changes. However, this would be one of the things that if a future development came along to add additional buildings in this area, then the city council and the commission, the staff, would certainly look at that intersection to see if it was appropriate to make changes at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I just would like to say that many hours of time have been spent on this and other proposed developments by our Planning and Zoning Commission. They listen carefully. They have very, sometimes passionate debates. But tonight, I feel the staff recommendation, Ordinance B, is best, and it comports well with the leaders of both Biltmore Heights and North Florence Bigelow. Accordingly, I would move to adopt Ordinance B.
Okay. Motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Ruckreal. Is there any additional discussion or comments on this item?
I'd just like to take a moment and thank Councilman Gria, who, over the weekend, dusted up just a little bit about probably some miscommunications. And I know he spent a good majority of time over the weekend meeting with Mr. Weston and others, including, most importantly, the local neighborhood group, to make sure that everyone was satisfied with this. So thanks for the extra time and effort to make this happen. First step in what we hope is a bigger and better use for that corner than what we've seen up there for quite some time. So thank you also to the property owners for continuing to work hard to make sure that there's a good development for our community here. We have a motion in a second to approve item B. Please cast your ballots.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We're at unfinished business, twenty dash one eighty-two. This is a request to adopt an ordinance amending Appendix A of the Code of the City of Peoria pertaining to short-term rental uses.
Councilmember Jensen?
I move to approve.
Motion to approve.
And just real briefly, I'm happy to see that finally, after, I think it's been six months, come forward. It's basically the same as what I proposed six months ago, but I think it gives ample protection to older neighborhoods. So when there are short-term rentals in owner or non-owner occupied properties, they will have to go through the special use process, providing a little, an opportunity for neighbors to give their input and to ensure that it's used in a way that doesn't disturb the peace of the neighborhood. So with that, I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Jensen, seconded by Councilman Gria. Discussion, Councilman Gria.
Director Black, I do want to thank the council members who have worked on this for many months and helped bring it to this point. But I think it's interesting to note the role that Airbnb is interested in playing. Could you elaborate a little bit on what's in the memo, Director Black, as it relates to the law enforcement portal, or anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. In some relatively recent conversations with the Airbnb Corporation, which is probably the largest short-term rental platform in the country, we were able to have some productive conversations where the Airbnb representative indicated a couple of things. One is that if the council were to approve an ordinance requiring it, they would collect and remit hotel taxes on the behalf of the property owners. And then, secondly, they did introduce us to a dedicated law enforcement portal that cities can register for so that the police department and authorized individuals of the police department would be able to have immediate access to Airbnb and to additional information if there were problems at any of the properties that Airbnb were listing in Peoria.
And we feel it would be to our city's advantage to utilize their machinery to deal with issues and to collect monies.
Councilman, I don't want to speak for the police chief in terms of access to the law enforcement portal. It is an informational portal, so my guess is that that would be something that would be appreciated. In terms of, and I also don't want to speak for the finance director on the collection of the fees, however, if an organization volunteers to collect and remit fees at no charge to the city, that would seem to be a good deal for us.
Does this approval contemplate a decision to be made by the policymaking body on how those fees would be collected? Do we need to make that decision tonight?
So, Councilman, last year, and I know that this item has been before the council many times and many iterations, however, last year, the council did adopt changes to the fee section and license section of the city code that required the property owner to collect and remit the fees on an annual basis. So the base work is already done there. What city staff would have to do in order for Airbnb to be obligated to collect is to revise that section of the city code, and then bring you back a separate ordinance that would cause that to happen. However, I don't believe that there's a need to wait for that particular ordinance in order to move ahead with this approval.
That would be something we would address on a future evening.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Montalongo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Black, could you please go over kind of the, a quick overview of this entire process of the short-term rentals?
Yes, sir. So really, there's two major components, and one, the council took care of several months ago, and one is before you this evening. So the zoning item is before you this evening. And effectively, what this communication does is it designates where in Peoria short-term rentals can be, and whether they are permitted uses or special uses. And so what's before you is that a short-term rental in any multifamily residential district, commercial districts, institutional districts, or light industrial districts would be permitted uses. So they would not need to have approval from the city council. Any short-term rental in a single-family district would require a special use approval through the city council. So that's the zoning part. Then there's the license part. So regardless of whether a short-term rental is a permitted use or a special use under the zoning regulations, all of them have to have a local license, which is similar to a hotel license, which has been in existence for many years in Peoria. Part of the hotel license process is that when somebody comes in to apply to have a short-term rental, the city will contact the neighborhood association, if there is one, in the area where the short-term rental is proposed. The neighborhood association will have 10 days to provide us with proof that there are restrictive covenants or other adopted restrictions for that specific neighborhood that prohibit short-term rentals. If that information is provided, then at that point, the license will not be issued. And certainly, neighborhood associations can preemptively provide us with that information so that we don't have to reach out to them every time an application comes in.
Okay. Any other questions for Director Black on this item? We have a motion in a second. Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
If there's no further unfinished business?
Unfinished business, Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make sure I remind everyone about the work that's going on in Western. The crew that are out there really needs everyone to be patient and to give them the space that they need to, as they start this whole Western complete streets process. So just a reminder that it's still going on and will be going on for two more years. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further unfinished? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
We're at new business?
New business, Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A reminder to the public that yard waste collection begins next Monday. So if they're taking the time to use this warm weather to clear their yards of waste, they'll be starting to pick that up on Monday. The second thing is a reminder that the city is seeking input on attributes the community would like to see on the next police chief. That input can come online or a paper copy survey that can be picked up from the library. They will give you a paper copy there. This is important for the whole city, but particularly the minority community will be wanting to make whatever comments and suggestions so that when the search is being done, your comments are taken into consideration. And then finally, some of you know, and probably most of you don't know, or have been wondering why I've not been present in the chambers, I suffered an injury at the end of January resulting in a concussion. And that concussion has limited my movements since me driving right about now. It's not advisable, or sometimes even walking is not advisable. So I will plan to be back in the chambers as soon as possible, but I wanted to thank everyone who has sent well wishes for all that has been going on with my health. But God is able, and I will be back. Thank you.
Thank you. I can also attest that it hasn't kept you homebound, because I've seen you at many locations throughout the district over the last month or six weeks as well. So we wish you...
Only with a chauffeur, and don't let my husband hear you say that, because I'm not supposed to be out of the house.
Sorry. New business, Councilman Rigenback?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple things. First of all, I want to give a big shout out to Community Development, particularly the Neighborhood Enhancement Division led by Kaylee Dre, for the pop-up cleanup they did yesterday in the East Bluff. And this is a new idea that's going to be happening across the city and all of our neighborhoods, that it's a beautiful day, people want to get out, so spontaneously, they organized this cleanup. And it was just a great success, young and old. I think a few people that just wanted to get out of the office on a day like yesterday, but great participation from the neighborhood groups, and just shows again what creative thinking does. So hats off to Joe Dula and Kaylee Dre and the whole team that was responsible for that yesterday. I also just want to remind people that the East Village Growth all Housing Program is open. Applications are being accepted. So if you've got some home improvement projects that need to be done, contact Community Development, and we can get you an application for that. And then finally, I'm sure I'm not the only one who's noticed an increase in, for lack of a better word, panhandling at some of our busy intersections around town, particularly Knoxville and War Memorial, and War Memorial and University, couple of the intersections that are the highest propensity for accidents, it would seem. So I know there's a fine line in our ordinance, and I am sorry, Corporation Counsel, I didn't tell you I was going to ask this, but maybe you could give us an overview of what our panhandling ordinance is. But more importantly, I would ask that those are the worst places possible to do it. Those are dangerous intersections, and I would just encourage, and I've talked to Chief Theobald about having the police aware of that as well. But if you would allow, share with us the legal ramifications of that, Corporation Counsel, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman. Are you asking for a report back with detailed information or just something general right now?
If you would, and again, I apologize for not briefing you ahead of time. If you could give us a brief overview, but a report back would be appropriate.
Sure, I'll be happy to give you more detailed information. But in general, panhandling laws are extremely difficult to enforce. And as a matter of fact, the city withdrew our panhandling ordinance off the books several years ago after conversations with, I believe, the ACLU. There was a case that came down from the Supreme Court called Reed v. Gilbert that generally gave substantial protection to... generally gave substantial protection to anyone that is holding a sign. And that case was slightly different, but it's been interpreted in the years since Reed came down, that if somebody is holding a sign, it is a constitutionally protected activity, and we cannot discriminate based on the language of the sign. Reed happened to involve politics, but they've extended that to panhandling. So if someone is holding a sign that is soliciting money, we cannot discriminate against them based on that. I know the Assistant City Manager had also asked me several months ago to look at some aggressive panhandling statutes that we're starting to see slightly in a couple cities on the West Coast. But I will say, what we've also seen is the ACLU has had conversations with them, and since we've seen them adopted, we've also seen them fairly quickly reverse course and then nullify those. So unfortunately, we do not have a lot of sort of legal backbone in order to eliminate the solicitation. We do certainly want to make sure that it's being done in a safe manner, though. So if somebody is stepping out into a lane of traffic, for example, we would want to make sure that that person understands that that's not in their best interest, that's not in their safety for them or the motorist. And I'll be happy to give you some more detailed information before the next meeting.
Very much.
Thank you. We have Councilmember Ruckregal next.
Thank you, Mayor. I think each of us, in our own way, has seen over the past year the leadership that both the city and the county has done, as well as our Peoria City-City Health Department, to be able to help us migrate through the COVID process. I think we would be especially important to recognize tonight that on March 8th, on Crane's Business Journal, the front page, there was an article which talks about very, very directly the fact that Peoria is the city. Peoria County and city are the examples to be able to watch on how to do it right, talking about the fact that we lead the state out of any county on making sure that our most vulnerable populations are vaccinated and what it took us to get here. And we know that Crane's is not only read within the state or the Midwest, but throughout the country. And I think that that says a lot about our Peoria City-City Health Department, our City of Peoria, our Peoria County, and also AMT, Advanced Medical Transport, who has helped lead the process altogether, coordinating to be able to make sure that our most vulnerable are taken care of. I would encourage everybody to read that. It's the March 8th edition. Front page, you can't miss it, and I think you'll see a lot of names and a lot of faces that people recognize.
Thank you. New business, Councilmember Grab?
Manager Urick, I believe the rental registration forms have gone out to those landlords who need to register their properties. And I did note that this year, we were calculating for each address for the property management company or the landlord, the amount that needed to be remitted. And that's a change from the past. But I don't think, and this might seem odd to you, but I've had landlords calling me, asking me what the due date is because it appeared not to be on the form. Normally, when one receives a bill, there is a due date on it.
Maybe if I could ask Director Scroggins to clarify, or Director Black to clarify, the due date that we have for you. I don't know offhand, but maybe if one of them can step to the mic and answer that question for you.
Seems like in the past, since I write checks for this, it's usually due by the end of February. I want to be sure no one is dinged as being a late payer by virtue of the fact that they don't even know when it's due. So how can we get that information out?
Councilman, this is Director Scroggins. We sent out the letters for registration at the end of last week. I think we've already put out a notice that the rental registrations would be due March 31st. This is a month later than usual. As a result, when we converted to our new software system in the fall, we were trying to get everything set up correctly. That's why you've seen some different forms this year with the totals, et cetera. I'm not sure why the due date was not on there, but it would be March 31st of this year.
Relieved to know that I don't have to make another trip to the Illinois Eye Care Center because I couldn't see a due date anywhere on those. So March 31 is deadline, correct?
That's correct. It was extended from, as you said, March 1st was the previous years. But since we didn't get the notices out until the end of the month, as we were getting them into the new software, we extended the due date to March 31st.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional new business? New business this evening? Would like to make a quick mention of and thank our Public Works Department, who have been working not around the clock, but almost nonstop for the last couple of weeks, filling up a lot of potholes. You know, we, the good old Midwest, and it's, we had a 30 below wind chill degree a couple days, followed by 30, 40 degree weather. So you get 60-degree temperature fluctuations, and it plays havoc with our roads, but they did a great job of trying to respond and continue to do so. Also, to both Public Works and iDOT, I would like to, for anybody traveling, especially on I-74 between Route 6 and downtown the last four or five days, you've seen a lot of iDOT vehicles out there who have been working diligently to pick up trash and litter that accumulates over the winter. And I talked to Kinsel Garnett, who is our regional engineer, and his team have been out doing a lot of pickup of litter, as has our Public Works Department, and we appreciate that. We also encourage, now that the nice weather is getting here, when folks are taking a walk, feel free to take a bag with you and pick up some of the things that have accumulated over the winter, and we appreciate your help on that. So that's it on new business. Madam Clerk?
We're at citizens' opportunity to address the city council. I did not receive any emails at all.
Okay. Anyone who would like to address the city council and their citizens to address tonight? Okay. Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
We do not have an executive session, so we would be adjourned.
We have a motion to adjourn. Councilman Euler, seconded, Councilman Seer. Seeing no discussion, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. We'd like to thank Joe Deacon and his listening audience at WCBU, as well as Cable Channel 22, and this meeting is adjourned.